Okay, if you please rise, we'll call the vote of Monday, October 21st, 2019, town council meeting. We'll have the pledge of allegiance led by Council Lady Bowen and the prayer by Councilman Ridgeway.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Dollarhead, dear Heavenly Father, please show us your mercy and grace today as we meet this morning. May your love be in our souls and hearts for others. May we continue to pray for the family of the fallen Indiana State Trooper who lost his life in the line of duty this last week. May we continue to pray for those fighting breast cancer. May we pray for those in Dallas going through this very difficult time. May we continue to do the will of God. Amen.
Mr. Zurov, may you call the roll.
Here.
Councilman Willis.
Here.
Councilman Willis.
Here.
Councilman Ridgeway.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
Here.
Councilman Ashton.
Here.
Here.
Previously received conference required meeting, any comments or questions? The second to approve, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, motion is approved. I have no business handling this business. Under sole business, I have the distribution of Blue River Community Foundation grant checks and Council Lady Bowen will start with you.
I have one here for Forest Hill. Actually, I have two. Not for Forest Hill, of course. Forest Hill, Southern Association. Do you just let everybody go right out of what you're doing before? Kind of stay up there with my mind actually. Should I say the amount? $11,000 and $450.
Thank you very much.
And then for Girls' Aid? $18,990.
Okay. Mr. Willis.
Boys or girls? Well, boys calling.
$28,953. I have nine meetings.
I have shares in Shelby County Arts Council. Shares in Shelby County, $5,721.
And then the Shelby County Arts Council, $2,000.
Last night, we brought everybody up here and she was in the wheelchair.
Willis, can you come up there, please?
I don't know.
Shelby County Youth Assistance Program.
He dropped it to you. Last year, we had to lift her up in the wheelchair up here, remember? So, why don't we take a picture where the seal is right there?
Art or A R C in Shelby County?
We should do it so they can leave after it's all done. Take a picture of them.
Basia and Shelby Senior Services. It's a combined total of $11,977. Healthy Shelby County. We have a check to void, break. Shelby County Players. Okay, it's $35,000 back to the general. Thanks for not showing. So, just to let everybody in the audience know, what we've done today is awarded the Rosino profit or the Rosino portion of the fund revenue share that we received to our local nonprofit. So, these were the groups that were funded by the Blue River Community Foundation and recommended by, I think Jennifer, is that your task?
On the Grants Committee.
Okay, on the Grants Committee. And so, these are the annual awards for 2019. Congratulations.
Can we, Tom, can we all take a picture so they could leave if they need to? Go down there and take a picture?
Yeah, whatever you want to do.
Because last time, we did it up here.
Whatever you'd like to do.
I would like to go take a picture with them.
They go.
And Blue River.
They're all going out there. We'll take a pretty good shot. Okay, well, now, reading the meeting, Monday, October 21st, 2019, meeting. Under new business, we have a special occasion by Mr. Kent of PKUSA.
Thank you so much. And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And thank, I'll take a few minutes of your time. Frank, could you pass this?
Thank you.
You've never come, uh, thank you. I want to invite all of you to the plan on November 11th.
We all want to thank you.
Which is that? Because we will be having a special meal for all of our workforce in honor of our veterans. We have steak. For those folks who don't want steak, we have chicken. For those folks who don't want chicken, we have steak. I have diversified menus. It's a big celebration where we honor our 21 veterans who have served our country for all these years, and it's one of our traditions. So, as of November the 11th, I'll send you an email invitation. I would appreciate your response. If you can come out, I also will show you where the new Ford product is going to be. And that's exciting. We're full speed ahead on that. Next week, we meet with the workforce on the 30th to share with them the financials, total transparency. And at that meeting, we will be honoring our veterans by giving them that gift in recognition for their service.
Mr. Kent, what time? Will that be the invitation?
That will be in the invitation, yes. Yeah, look for that, and I'll leave it for you if you all can make it out to see the informational meetings and seeing veterans. It's important. It's important. Probably in your mailbox, you also got one of our newsletters. I thought it would be a good idea. We do the newsletters every other month. We mail them to the homes, and I thought we'll just start mailing them to the city and county officials. So, I mean, another thing coming up is breakfast with Santa. We're doing it at the casino this year. A little bit different, never done it at the casino.
So, this will be a breakfast for the adults?
And the children?
Okay. So, it'll be on the track side, then?
Yep. Now, I did arrange with Santa, the adults will get fruit slots. And a question I had, will there be an open bar? I said, yes, we'll have milk, we'll have juice, and for those employees that went to our stuff, we'll have black coffee. That's all I had. Any questions I can answer?
I just want to make a comment. So, as a veteran, I spent 16 years in the Navy. I appreciate what you do for the veterans out there at PKUSA.
Thank you. And thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. We do not do it enough for our veterans, and I firmly believe it. It's so important to have them. And the more we can do, the better off we are as a nation.
I think it was important, Rob and I worked on the project with the VA.
Yep.
Getting the VA clinic here. I had lunch with Robert on Saturday.
Yep.
And he was talking about how to use that now as his primary care as opposed to having to drive to Camp Atterver or Indian Avenue. So, it's been a valuable resource.
It is. It's so important. In the years, I've discovered one thing about veterans, they are the most humble people in the world.
Can you give that answer for your office?
Thank you very much. I'll send you an email invitation. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Actually, I ordered this 19-2869 repeal sections of the zoning code and the subdivision control ordinance. Whereas the common council of the city of Shelbyville in the area.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion is second.
Second.
Motion is second. Adam?
So, this is like I mentioned in the pre-meeting, back in 2012, we adopted our new unified development ordinance with all our new development standards, zoning districts. And in that process, we repealed the former zoning ordinance and subdivision control ordinance sometime after that date. All that language was accidentally reclassified into the code ordinance. So, this ordinance that you guys are writing on today is just to remove that language again so there's no confusion as to what development standard should apply.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye. If those opposed, motion is approved. Next, we have ordinance 19-871, plan unit development for Hampton Major. Councilman Willis.
Whereas the common council of the city of Shelbyville has conducted a public hearing as required by law in regard to the application for change in zoning district and adoption of a planned unit development. And whereas the common council of the city of Shelbyville, Indiana recognizes the need for orderly growth and development within the city of Shelbyville and those areas within its planning jurisdiction. And whereas the common council of the city of Shelbyville.
Motion is approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Mr. Root?
I will just briefly kind of explain on the record here for the public what a P U T is, and then I'll turn it over to Tom Davis and Chris King to talk through the details of the P U T. I have, this is just made copies for everybody, so everyone can have a hard copy to take home of those development standards. But essentially, what a planned unit development is, a vast majority of the city and the city's jur, planning jurisdiction is zones, one of a number of zoning districts that's in our unified development ordinance, whether that's R1, R2 for residential, or general industrial, IG, or institutional, whatever that might be. There's some standard zoning districts that work for most of the community. But in unique circumstances, where there's either a unique character, unique geographic conditions, the planned unit development is used. Existing P U Ts are Intelplex and Twin Lakes, the entire Twin Lakes neighborhood are two good examples of this, where there's some kind of unique condition, or a unique character, or a unique combination of uses. So, in those areas, they will develop standards that are specific to that area because it is unique in character or in use. So, the Hampton Major project is being proposed as a planned unit development because of the unique aspects of the historic neighborhood that it is placed in, and it's Park 72 downtown, and just the reuse of the old hospital site. It's an infill site, it's just very unique. We, no zoning district that we have on the books would fit that and maintain that character and promote the aesthetics of the neighborhood. So, that's kind of just high level what a P U T is. Any questions on that before I turn it over to Tom and Chris? And I'll hand it over. While they talk, I'll hand it over. Come to this.
I'm Tom Davis. I'm with Genesis Property Development, and we're just here today to kind of highlight the plan development that you are being handed currently. The purpose of this plan development is to provide high-quality infill resident development on about 4.75 acres within the west side of the historic district of downtown Shelbyville. Its focus is to create a walkable neighborhood with custom home sites that blends with the architectural character and quality of the exceptional homes in that area. Additionally, seeks to provide opportunities for high-quality townhouses as well on phase two development and make a mixed desire of housing opportunities for people in Shelbyville close to Public Square. There are basically two areas. There's the area one, which you see with the homes on them that are the single-family residence, and area two, which is future townhome development. I'm going to bring Chris King forward now to kind of explain some of the details further on the plan development.
Thank you, Chris King. As Adam put, what we have here is just another set of standards, and it can be considered almost an overlay to the zoning code. So, if there's a standard in here that, anything that's in here supersedes what is in the zoning district. If it is not, or let's just keep the zoning code, if it is not mentioned in here, then the zoning code coholds on those items. So, this is just something that is put in place on top of that to basically provide an extra level of protection, to make sure that we elevate those architectural standards and that we put together standards that are going to keep the character of that district neighborhood. What I'll do is I will walk through these standards just so that you have a pretty good idea of what we're looking at, and in a few cases, I'll compare that to where things are with the actual zoning district itself. So, if you just move really by the section four, we'll probably just follow along from here to the go here. The minimum lot area, what we've established through the flat part, the minimum lot sizes. And just for example, within the existing zoning code, within the density bonus, you can have a lot as small as 6,500 square feet. So, the lots that we have in this district are going to be about 6,800 square feet to 7,500 square feet. That's very typical of the downtown, the lots in the area. So, these lots are going to be very, very congruent with what you see, but also it's still larger than what the smallest possible lot is within the current zoning district. So, I think that's something to, something that's important to consider. From the maximum lot area, we've established it to be the same as what has been submitted on the Blue River Act as well. The question has come up, could someone come in and purchase two lots and then just build a monster home on two lots? We've said within this standard that there's no combination of lots. And so, what we're trying to do is preserve the type of construction that we're seeing in downtown and not really allow someone to do something like that. So, we're again going to protect integrity of what's in the neighborhood itself. Allowable structure types, we've got a primary structure, which is the home itself, has a minimum footprint of 1,200 square feet and a minimal living area of 2,200 square feet. The intent here is we're trying to make it a two-story residence, and in most cases, which again is typical of what you'll see in that area. Accessory structures, we're allowing a one accessory structure per lot. Allowable accessory structures include a detached garage, cool house, in-law quarters, dwelling units, workshop, greenhouse, stores building, home occupation. We're stripping it to, to some of those things. We're making it more strict to what is actually in the zoning ordinance itself. We're also saying that those accessory structures are also subject to all requirements of the unified development ordinance. The minor accessory, we're allowing one minor accessory structure, which could be like you said, maximum footprint of 300 square feet. So, a question came up as far as setbacks are concerned along Washington Street, we have setbacks, front setbacks of 15 feet, which is fairly typical of the other homes that are along Washington Street. On Franklin Street, the setback that we've established is eight feet from Franklin Street. And if you go down Franklin Street, you know, just past the site, that's pretty close to where those homes are. They're a little bit closer to the street. Maximum structure heights, we're allowing for a higher phone height in this area because if you go through, look at some of the older homes, typically you have, you know, each floor is a little bit higher than what you see in a lot of new construction, and with a lot of the roof pitches, those can exceed what is allowed in the current standard. The same is true with accessory structures. The actual U D O allows for an accessory structure, a garage height of 15 feet, we're allowing that to go up to 25 feet. If you look at a lot of the accessory structures within the area, it does allow, they are, they are higher than that. Lot coverage area, we've established that some cover with the previous surface up to 80 percent of the lot, which is typical again of the type of development that we see in the downtown that is a higher number than what is allowable in some of the more suburban developments that you see. And we're requiring sidewalks. We've upped the landscaping standard. There really is no landscaping standard for residential property within the city, but within this particular district, we are requiring a, some plantings with that. We've established very similar standards for the townhome development itself. So, when, you know, that document comes along, there will be some specific standards that would have to be followed for someone making that proposal as well. I won't go into the detail of all that, but they're very similar standards as far as what the requirements are. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions on that note once we get through here. Another key thing that we do with this planning development, establish an architectural control committee. And this is where we really start to focus on what the composition of the structures are themselves. And this is above and beyond what's currently provided for within unified development. One thing that's important to be clear about here is that the role of our architectural control committee is subjective. So, you know, they're able to look at the designs that are presented and, you know, determine, is this something that fits or doesn't? And, you know, it goes beyond just the minimum standards that we list here. So, there are certain things that we say here, like we're asking for a variation of design, and that the architectural control committee should consider that, that this is a variation of what's been previously proposed, so we don't have four houses that look exactly the same. We also want to make sure that the style fits with the type of homes that are currently in the district too. So, that's where some of the subjectiveness of the control committee comes in with this. With this, what we're proposing right now with this planning unit development is that the architectural control committee will consist of two members designated by the planning commission, with one of those members actually being a member of the planning commission, two designated as appointed by the mayor of Shelbyville, and then the executive director of Main Street. And we established some minimum requirements for those five individuals. Those people have to live within city limits in case of the Main Street Director, the Main Street Director does not live within city limits, and the Main Street Board can't appoint someone. So, we tried to write all of that there. We established a term for that. The planning commission itself will actually serve as the staff for that board. Responsibilities of the control committee will be to review all primary structure and accessory structures, all additions and renovations to primary structures and accessory structures, fencing, compliance with landscape requirements, driveways, approaches, and parking areas. This is a lovely looking at those and trying to determine, you know, do the materials that we've established within the architectural standards of this. There's a process for how designs have to be submitted and reviewed in the timeline or we can go over there. That's included within this as well. To get into the architectural control standards, some key things that we spell out here is compatible. All structures, we say all structures with new structures need to fit with what's in the neighborhood, they need to be compatible with what's in the neighborhood, and the architectural control committee is the one that actually makes that determination. We're also requiring that a professional architect design and submit these plans so that we have, you know, someone who's reviewing this that clearly understands, you know, a lot of those architectural elements that need to be tied together, fitting with the current neighborhood. We establish orientation, saying that lots along Washington Street have to face Washington Street, and same with Franklin Street. So, we establish restoration that need to be. We establish what materials are more restrictive in this document than is allowable in the current unified development ordinance. So, just so you know, primary building materials may consist of up to two of the following: brick, natural stone, cultured stone, smooth wood siding, smooth fiber cement siding. We restrict things like vinyl, corrugated metal, those types of things. Again, it's subjective, so the architectural control committee can make decisions based on that, but we're providing that so as people are submitting plans, they're going by this document. We establish accent materials for glazing. We're requiring a certain amount of glazing on the front facade and then a lesser amount on the other facade as well. Glazing meaning glass, yeah, sorry. We do establish, the architectural control committee will order new colors too. So, you know, there's, we want to make sure that there's nothing that is really obtrusive or bright, or, you know, things that don't fit neon colors, those types of things. So, we bring that in too. And just by establishing, you know, we can almost raise the value when we come up with a certain level of home just by establishing some specific things like trim type. So, you know, trim around windows, we establish what has to be in place. If there's shutters, you know, the shutters have to be half the window width. We establish what has to be there, we're foundation cladding, water heater cladding, change of cladding, roof pitch. We're going to go on and on and on, you know, with this. So, that covers most of the items that are in here. We brought up others, were the lots that will be between Franklin Street and Washington Street will require alley electric drivers. So, we have some standards in here too for, you know, what is necessary for our sizes, setbacks, and requirements for those alley electric drivers, as well as along the north side of Franklin Street, those will have to be front-facing drivers. So, we've established some of the known standards for those front-facing drivers. So, kind of gone into a lot of detail. There's even more detailing here too, but I'll be happy to answer your questions if that's helpful.
Questions from the board?
We got a few questions here. You know, I've often said every time you come in front of us, how, how.
And, you know, it goes beyond just the minimum standards that we list here. So there are certain things that we say here, like we're asking for a variation of design and that the architectural control committee should consider that, that this is a variation of what's been previously proposed, so we don't have four houses that look exactly the same. We also want to make sure that the style fits with the type of homes that are, that are currently in the district too. So that's where some of the, the subjectiveness of the control committee comes in with this. With this, what we're proposing right now with this planning unit development is that the architectural control committee will consist of two members designated by the, the planning commission, with one of those members actually being a member of the planning commission. Two designated as appointed by the mayor, Shelbyville, and then the executive director of Main Street. And we established some minimum requirements for those five individuals. Those people have to live within city limits in case of the Main Street Director, the Main Street Director does not live within city limits and the Main Street Board can't appoint someone. So we've tried to write all of that there. We've established a term for that. The planning commission itself will actually serve as the staff for that board. Responsibilities of the control committee will be to review all primary structure and accessory structures, all additions and renovations to primary structures and accessory structures, fencing, compliance with landscape requirements, driveways, approaches and parking areas. This is a level looking at those and trying to determine, you know, do the materials need to be, what we've established within the, the architectural standards of this. There's a process for how designs have to be submitted and reviewed in the timeline or we can go over there. That's included within this as well. To get into the architectural control standards, some key things that we've spelled out here is compatible. All structures, we say all structures with new structures need to fit with what's in the neighborhood, they need to be compatible with what's in the neighborhood. And our architectural control committee is the one that actually makes that determination. We're also requiring that a professional architect design and submit these plans so that we have, you know, someone who's reviewing this that clearly understands, you know, a lot of those architectural elements that need to be tied together, fitting with the current neighborhood. We establish orientation, saying that lots along Washington Street have to face Washington Street and same with Franklin Street. So we establish restoration that needs to be. We establish what materials are more restrictive in this document than is allowable in the current Unified Development Ordinance. So just so you know, primary building materials may consist of up to two of the following: brick, natural stone, cultured stone, smooth wood siding, smooth fiber cement siding. We restrict things like vinyl, corrugated metal, those types of things. Again, it's subjective, so the architectural control committee can make decisions based on that, but we're providing that so as people are submitting plans, they're going by this document. We establish maximum materials for glazing. We, we're requiring a certain amount of glazing on the front facade and then a lesser amount on the other facade as well. Glazing meaning glass, yes, sorry. We do establish, the architectural control committee will order new colors too. So, you know, there's, we want to make sure that there's nothing that is really obtrusive or bright or, you know, things that don't fit neon colors, those types of things. So we bring that in too. And just by establishing, you know, we almost raise the value when we come up with a certain level of home just by establishing some specific things like trim type. So, you know, trim around windows, we establish what has to be in place. If there's shutters, you know, the shutters have to be half the window width. We establish what has to be there, foundation cladding, water heater cladding, change of cladding, roof pitch. We're going to go on and on and on, you know, with this. So that covers most of the items that are in here. The lots that will be between Franklin Street and Washington Street will require alley enclosed drivels. So we have some standards in here too for, you know, what is necessary for, for our sizes, setbacks and requirements for those alley-located drivels. As well as along the north side of Franklin Street, those will have to be front-facing drivels. We've established some of the minimum standards for those front-facing drivels. So kind of gone into a lot of detail. There's even more detailing here too, but I'll be happy to answer your questions if that's helpful.
Questions from the board?
I've got a few questions here. You know, I've often said every time you come in front of us, how, how you treat me with respect, I treat you with respect and everything. I think you're a highly intelligent individual. The last month at the planning commission, this is what they were asking for, okay? You're asking us to vote for it. There's not one city council member that really went through this and vetted this and been able to ask questions. I don't think, maybe they've been talking themselves, okay? But you have given us so much complex detail the public doesn't even know, okay? Why didn't we come out with a public meeting, a true public meeting? This is a public meeting, but nobody knows what we're going to talk today about except the U D and they don't know what that means. Why didn't we bring this out in the public? Have a big meeting so the neighbors know exactly what's in here. This has been going on for a long, long time, hasn't it? This didn't happen overnight. You knew these plans last month, in the conceptional plan, when the neighbors came and said, what's, what's the more details? Can you give us? Said, no, no, we're not doing that right now. This has been timed line for the vote come without the public's full knowledge of what's going on. The townhomes have not even been talked about for months, for months. And you were asking the planning commission, what about the townhomes? And you said, well, we don't know, I'm just, we're talking about the conceptional plan tonight. You knew exactly when the townhomes were coming. The public has been misled all along. Really, we end up with these eighteen homes. That's not going to be the end of the world. This process has been flawed according to the public. And I represent the public and they have a right to know all the details. You said yourself, these are very complex details that just have been thrown at us the last week. Come on, guys, we can do better. We need to educate the public about what we're doing. It's a private investment. Then we've been misled about the developer, okay? It's never been really said, who's really going to invest in this? Who's going to be the developer? Okay? We know that, who's going to be the developer. It's clear who's going to be the developer. Why don't we just say it? Who's going to really push this and, and make the money off of it? Why can't we say that to the public? That's all.
Adam, has this process gone through any process any differently than any other planning unit development in the City of Shelbyville under the current regulations?
No, and, and to talk about the, the process, um...
Hang on a second. So the answer is no?
No, no.
So after today's meeting, would, what would be the future process?
Next Monday, I'll go to the planning commission for the public hearing and a formal recommendation.
So there will be another public hearing on that and there will be a recommendation by the planning commission?
Yes.
What happens after that?
It'll come back to council a week later.
Okay. So we've got three or four weeks here with this information that we've been presented with today. We'll be able to be disseminated to the public and they'll have the opportunity to review it, yes?
Yes.
Okay. And this is the process that every planning unit development goes through in the City of Shelbyville.
And, and to that note, it's a process that quite frankly is established in state statutes. So it's a process we must follow through this. So conceptual plan with the planning commission last month, they were reviewing from a lot layout and a geometry setting. We didn't have the detailed plan at that meeting because that's not what the planning commission was reviewing and that's not what they were going on at that time. So their role is to, is in advisory capacity next week when they get this done.
This is a separate process from what happened at the planning commission?
Yes.
Secondly, the allegation that some developer is going to make a bunch of money on this, on this specific issue, these lots will be available for individual purchase, correct? If Mr. Ridgeway decided he wanted to build one of these homes, he would buy that lot, correct? He could choose any builder that he wanted to build these lots, correct? And the requirements would be that they would have to follow the standard set by the detailed development plan. And if he were to buy this lot, who would be selling him that lot?
The City of Shelbyville.
The City of Shelbyville. And so he could pick any builder, he could pick any model dependent upon these standards. Much like other planning developments in the City of Shelbyville.
We would only hold builders to these standards here.
So the developer is the City of Shelbyville. Genesis is handling the infrastructure, correct? They are entered into an agreement through the build, operate, transfer that was approved by the council and by the redevelopment commission to handle this project. That is their sole role is to manage the infrastructure of this project, correct? Mrs. Melter, have I stated anything that is incorrect at this point?
No.
Thank you. Questions?
No. I understand the process. The process is always and has been for years flawed, okay? Because when you, I don't care if it's the first vote or second vote, I want to know all the information upfront. I want to personally vet it, okay? We do go by the strict guidelines, I get that. Those guidelines sometimes are flawed, okay? Because as of, let me read to you, August eighth, two thousand and eighteen, is it our intent to personally invest in this project and work with the city and local partners to develop the quality standards, market this development and construct, construct speculative housing? That was by Chris King, okay?
If Mr. King wants to construct a speculative home, that's no different than a spec home being built by Arbor in their development or by Westwood in their development or when the Overlook was developed as a planning development, there were spec homes built there. There's nothing that prohibits Mr. King from buying that lot or Mr. Davis or Mr. Ewing. Those lots are available for public purchase through a process that's established by Indiana Code. If your issue is with the process that's being followed, you should probably discuss that with Senator Lysing and Representative Everhart since that's set forth by Indiana Code.
And, and I guess to address the point about the, the concept itself and, and the townhome aspect, this, this document here that, that lays out the, the concept, the general lot layout and the townhomes to the southern portion of that, that's been around for probably close to a year and that specific document hasn't changed and, and the overall concept hasn't changed in that entire process. We've just been ironing, ironing out details ever since.
I think one thing that should be pointed out as well in this document, the protections that are prevented, that are committed to the surrounding property are the fact that carports are not prohibited, are not permitted in this district. If you look at the surrounding area, there are a few carports that have been built. We do not control those at this point. The fact that we have an architectural review committee is something that is above and beyond what is allowed in the surrounding districts because we don't have that structure. So again, this is something that is above and beyond that's protecting the values of the properties in the adjoining neighborhoods.
And those decisions have been made behind closed doors, but not to the public.
Other than, other than closing out the noise in the hallway, those doors are open.
When do you plan on having a public meeting? Not, not a planning commission meeting, I'm talking about a full-fledged public meeting on this and giving all the details. But now all the details are coming out.
Are planning commission meetings not public?
They like to go by the letter of the law. Why didn't we have all these details? If you just stated that we did a while back, if you just didn't want to release it until now about the townhomes and everything.
Again, making allegations that we're doing something behind closed doors is simply not...
The public's well, well aware enough, they're just aware of what's going on.
We received these. We got an email and...
A week ago, a week ago.
Correct. So I'm talking, I'm, yeah. But I absolutely know that you've taken some of these things and put documents online. You could have done that, but you didn't. You wanted to come here today and complain about the process.
I'm not that good putting them online, I'm sorry.
Okay. I would beg to differ.
If you want to, then why didn't the city? Why didn't the city make it transparent and put it online and wouldn't you own it and gave it to us? Well, then you're asking the question, why didn't I have to?
Because I don't have a problem with the process. When it came to me, I'm talking.
You're on the inside, so...
Oh my gosh. Okay. But if I have questions, I call people that I have a question with, have a conversation with prior to the meeting to get the answers that I want.
And then to add on top of that, on September thirtieth, we had a meeting and they also explained the process and how this works. And you happened to be at that same meeting. And during that meeting, they even said the P U D, we presented a later date. Now, they, like Adam just said, he explained what went on in that meeting too. You were at that meeting and I hope you remember it. So to say we're doing things behind closed doors is completely false. It's conspiracy theories. And you love to spread that, I get it.
Sean, just open those doors, please, but certainly that one percent of the fact that this is a closed door meeting.
These details have been known for a long time and now they're just now coming out to vote on. It's, it's been a process, it's been flawed and that's my statement now.
And it's interesting because we did the same thing with Twin Lakes, did we not? Where we amended the putt? And no one was, no one was screaming conspiracy at that point. So one leads to believe that maybe these are opportunistic comments.
See, you guys like to make an election issue. I've argued this ever since this plan's been on, on, and the public has too. It's been a very unpopular, uh, project with the, with the public. They refuse to...
Again, you're over-characterizing the public comment.
You're not stating the facts regularly, no.
No worries. Are we done with this debate? Any other comments?
So just to add on top of this and to finalize it, this will go in front of the planning commission at a public hearing on Monday. Part of a public hearing, okay? So it's not behind a closed door, anything, it is for a public hearing. Okay, thank you.
Add a public question? I don't know, my material isn't all of that well enough to decide or come up with an idea of cost. What do you expect one of these houses with the additional requirements? What's a house going to cost to build it? Just roughly, just ballpark, it's just an idea. Three fifty? Three fifty? I know we said three fifty. And there's thirteen of them, is that counted, right, thirteen of them?
Yep.
Okay, all right. And so where are we at? Let's, let's assume Brian or somebody who wants to build a lot or buy a lot, so we interviewed, they're not yet for sale, we can't buy one yet, right? We can't buy a lot.
Yeah, until this P U D is approved, the lots will be created. But once the lots are created, then I don't know the exact legal process, but they will go through a process to be sold to the public.
Time's running out. Just roughly, just an idea of...
Part of that process is that it'll have to be increased by two separate appraisers and so I'll have to then reach out to appraisers and get them involved, which will take a month or two to get those two appraisals back. And then we will be able to put the notice in the paper. I believe it'll go in the paper two or three times, at least a week apart each time. The code on that is different for each thing that you put in the paper. And then we will receive bids. We'll open those bids again at a public meeting and then we'll take those under advisement, review them and the highest bids on each block will be awarded. After that process is done, if there's any lots that are not sold, there's a separate process to go through that is to start parsing them out to the second or third votes.
And all that will start again after the, the P U D is fully adopted and we create the lots and generate the whole process.
I, I think there's going to be a nice demand on thirteen right away, but our council people are interested, I didn't know the process.
Yeah, we, we've had a number of realtors calling and asking that exact question, what's the process going to be like? Because I have a number of clients that are interested, so we think the demand's there as well.
Received and called last week?
Yeah.
I would say, just to, since it's a city-owned property or not the business to necessarily profit or something. I would, I would, I would hope it's a fair suggestion that we're looking to sell it to people who are ready to build within a certain time, not somebody to profit. Yeah, I mean, not, I mean, yeah, willing to build within twelve months, this is a suggestion we could have.
We do have a one-year...
One year till, yeah.
Yeah, starting to start to start to show.
We're paying, yeah, we're paying.
And I must correct you real quick, we are and we do want profit, it's called property taxes and putting homes on this property will create the property taxes.
Yeah, but, yeah. I agree, I agree.
And the sale of lots, the sale of the lots, you know, the city will recover all the sale of the lots, so that'll be, that'll come back, right back to the city.
And plus the length was two, two was right. Correct, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, opposed?
No.
Next we have Resolution twenty nineteen to H. S. R. D., we're seeing a bunch of computer software, Mr. Rea.
Whereas on October fifteenth, twenty eighteen, Resolution twenty eighteen to H. S. R. D., amending Resolution twenty ten to H. S. R. D., this adopted by the Council of the City of Shelbyville addressing...
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Mr. Rea, I think this is your final one.
It is, I'll keep it short so we can get out of here, so it probably goes longer than that. Uh, so, like I said in the pre-meeting, one of the biggest comments we get from people in regards to our office is that a lot of, most of our services aren't modernized, they aren't online, they aren't available digitally. So what, what the request is today is funding for the initial cost to start digitizing and moving our department's services online, putting in the cloud-based platform so that inspectors out on a job site can grab an iPad, they can grab their phone, they can conduct all of this, all of our business online in a, in a digital platform and also so that the citizen and the contractor, the developer, has access to all of that information and the ability to request those things, submit for permits, submit applications all in an online platform. And I had, I'll pass this out to you guys, but I think I emailed this out and a whole list of different features this is going to bring. And quite frankly, it's going to bring a lot of just efficiencies to our office. We're doing a lot of things manually right now, keeping track of bond expiration dates and insurance expiration dates on five hundred-plus contractors, issuing hundreds of permits a year, conducting thousands of inspections and all of that is duplicate carbon copy paper. So as much of that as we can digitize and automate and just become more efficient and provide that information to the public for that.
I'll go ahead and make a statement, uh, this came in front of the Finance Committee and was approved through our recommendation.
I don't think they attended that.
How soon are we hoping to get this implemented?
Um, so if we can sign a contract soon, the entire implementation takes about nine to twelve months. But there's multiple components that we'll be implementing, how do we get them done? We'll turn them to the public as well, so permitting and applications will be the first one, it's the easiest one, inspections and then code enforcement and our planning and such stuff. So in a couple of months, I'm hoping, three to four months, we'll have the first module online, open to the public, but the whole thing is going to take probably a year.
Any other questions?
One other thing, not to go back to issues, can we put that, the P U D packet that we just received, can we put that online as well through the, just like we did the, the planning commission?
If it's not already, yeah, all of our staff reports and all of our planning commission materials go online a week before, about, about five days before the meeting when we complete them, so that might already be online, if not, it will...
Just like we did with the comp plan. So just so we can squash any theories or, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, opposed?
Go back to topic, I'm going to add along here, go back to the appraisal, what you're thinking about this appraisal of that ground. Do we have to have an appraisal because we're a city entity?
Yes, it's like Indiana Code, like that's exactly how we have to purchase and or sell any real property and so we follow that process.
But we're not buying, right? I'm not trying to, all right, we're not buying.
No, we're not buying it, it's just there's a specific process in the Indiana Code that we buy property or sell property, this is the process we have to follow.
So will we have an appraisal based off of houses being there or just based on ground?
It'll be appraised for the purposes of building houses there. So we're waiting for the final flat to be done, so we know each lot size, we'll get an appraisal for each separate type of lot size. So it'll be appraised on how big the lot is with the purpose of a house being built there.
You can just, I mean, why? I'm just trying to not drive that price up for somebody looking to buy that property. What, what's it matter what the appraisal comes in at? If people are, if we bid it out and people are willing to pay, who, who cares what the appraisal actually hit is?
We are legally required to sell it in between those two appraisals. So you're required to get two appraisals and you have to sell it for a amount that falls within those two.
What if somebody bids higher than the highest?
Then we can sell it for higher.
We can sell it for higher, so we can, yeah.
We have to sell it for the minimum of the average of those two appraisals.
Just trying to save whoever, thirteen people money, I mean, just going to grade, appraisal's going to shoot probably the bids up, so...
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't even begin to say what factors, factor in an appraisal of the surrounding characteristics of comps, so...
We'll probably have to share the appraisal, I mean, it's accurate, based words.
When I do the notice for the public bids, I'll actually put the minimum amount in there so that... there, so that everyone knows, if you're not willing to spend this amount of money, please don't waste your time and submit a bid under that. So, for example, if it comes down at 20,000, that is the average of two appraisals, then I'm going to put in the public notice that that was the number. I don't want anyone in the public to submit a bid that we can't accept. That's not fair to them, it's not fair to us.
Was the, roughly the cost 350, is that what you guys said roughly, is that the lot included, or is it 350 plus the lot?
That'd be construction cost, and a good way to think about it is about 150 bucks square foot, so 2,300, you got 330, but people will certainly spend more.
I just, I know a couple of years ago, because I think it's a great, I think it's a great, great addition to the, the city of downtown, I think it's a great, um, I just, I know a couple of years ago, and I don't know what it was for last year, there was only one listed property, residential price, our property, this could've been 17, maybe 16, for over 250 that sold in Shelby County, and did you 13? And that's a couple of years ago, but I thought that's a pretty, I mean, I think you can do it, but I just think that, I mean...
I think the market's much different, I mean, talking to people who've sold their homes in that neighborhood, uh, Packers, Lockridge's, they, they got, uh, 350 plus or bought those homes fairly quickly.
Very project, yeah, but, sorry, I'll go back, you know, period, thank you.
Okay, any other new business? Under other business, you wanna talk about your award now? You said later. Say tonight, that's fine. You're embarrassing me.
Uh, no, uh, speaking of economic development association, uh, we've handed out a rising star recognition, uh, award that was put in to the newspaper, appreciate the article on that, um, but it was, uh, went on to kind of say that was a team effort, um, definitely it was the city and the county officials, uh, city and county, all the great things that were going on in here, uh, I did accept the award on behalf of all of us. Um, the, uh, one of the great things about that award is that's voted upon by my peers, uh, the economic development and the activists in the field, so, um, anytime you get an award from, from your peers that truly know the business, and truly know what's going on, it was a, it was a great honor, and again, I, I thank everybody here at the city and county. Um, if you want to see the award, it's a bobblehead of myself, uh, so, uh, it's a good way to rest, I'm not gonna... I'll stay there. Got a really fat head. But thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, Joanne, Jeff, Ethan, and myself attended a meeting, uh, in Newcastle last week with Linda Sanders, Anne Thurston, on, uh, tax, uh, property tax abatement considerations. It was a half a day seminar, it was very valuable, and thank you all for, uh, going with us to that.
It was very informative.
Okay, reports from boards, committees, or commissions? Comments or questions from citizens? Hearing that, can I motion right here?
Thank you.
Thank you.